Good evening. I now called the March 6, 2019 meeting of the Hampton School Board to order. Ms. Bowles, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Henry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here.
Ms. Mugler?
Here.
Mr. Samuels? Dr. Woodhouse?
Here.
Ms. Cherry?
Here.
Let the record show that all board members are present and accounted for with the exception of Mr. Samuels. As we move now to the invocation, I'd like to call on our student liaison, Mr. Xavier Williams.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Dr. Smith. I'm very excited about tonight's invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Not because it's a great student, but it's a great student from the great Hampton High School. I had a bit bias on that one. Today, we have Axie Chambers, and she's going to do our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance today, and so I'm going to invite Axie to the podium for tonight.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Today, I will be reading the poem "Don't Quit" by John Greenleaf Witter. When things go wrong, as they sometimes will, when the road you're trudging seems all uphill, when the funds are low and the debts are high, and you want to smile but you have to sigh. When care is pressing you down a bit, rest if you must, but don't quit. Success is failure turned inside out, the silver tint of the clouds of doubt, and you can never tell how close you are; it may be near when it seems afar. So stick to the fight when you are hardest hit, and it's when things go wrong that you mustn't quit.
Great job. Thank you so much for those inspiring words. And as I said, you know, you're a freshman at Hampton High School, so I want to ask you, how are you liking the freshman academy so far? What are your experiences in the freshman academy at Hampton?
The field trips are very inspirational, and I learned a lot from them. It has me ready to graduate earlier. And the teachers, they're really nice. One of them is here with me today, Ms. Buckman.
Awesome. And also, you know, we had the commit-to-graduate ceremony this morning, so what are your words on those? Did you learn anything? How did you like the event?
The guest speaker, he was really nice, and he, like, gave us a different perspective on school in general and teachers and how they help you more.
That's good. And one more question. You have a favorite subject? Anything you like about...
Math.
Math? That's one subject I don't like. Sorry, I'm just not a math person, but it's okay. I do what I got to do. Please introduce some of the people you have with us today.
Today, I have my mother and my father, Mr. and Mrs. Chambers.
Okay. Please stand and be recognized.
I also have my principal, Ms. Hardy. My success 101 teacher, Ms. Buckman. And I also have my sister, Aria, and my cousin, A Leo.
Thank you all for joining us today, and I know that it could probably have some time on your schedule, but it's always great to see you all here, and it's also a testament to how much you support Axie and her endeavors in high school. And I would even give you some inspiration, Axie, as you move on in high school and graduation approaches in three and a half years. Continue to do what you have to do and continue to work hard. Don't quit, as you said in your poem. Graduation will come soon. Take it from a person that graduates in June. So, I'm so excited, but it's when the, you know, long nights and so forth, doing homework and everything, keep pushing on, and you'll be very successful. Thanks so much for joining us today, and wish you much success in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you again for being here tonight, and thank you, Mr. Williams, for your words of wisdom as well. As we move with the agenda, we move to item 1.03, Adoption of the Agenda. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, move approval of the agenda as presented?
Second.
It has been properly moved in second, moved by Mr. Kilgore and second by Ms. Mugler, that we approve tonight's agenda as adopted and as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Bowles, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. Our next item for business is the Consent Agenda. This consists of item 2.01 Personnel Report 2019-05, 2.02 Minutes of the School Board Meeting of January 30, 2019, 2.03 Minutes of the School Board Meeting of February 6, 2019, 2.04 Minutes of the School Board Meeting of February 20, 2019, 2.05 Certification of the Closed Session of January 30, 2019, and 2.06 Certification of the Closed Session of February 6, 2019. Is there a motion?
Move approval, Madam Chairman?
Second.
It has been properly moved by Ms. Henry and second by Mr. Kilgore that we approve tonight's consent agenda. Is there any discussion from board members? Hearing none. Ms. Bowles, would you please call for the vote?
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. As we move to item 3, this is the item that consists of our superintendent and staff reports, and I'd like to turn the mic over now to our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Jeffrey Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. At this time, we'll have a presentation on Funds 51, 60, 65, and 94 for the FY '20 year as we move forward. And so Ms. Dorch, Ms. Brittany Dorch, along with Ms. Edwina Forrest, will be presenting this evening. And so Ms. Dorch is our Chief Financial Officer, and Ms. Forrest serves as our Director for School Nutritional Services.
Good evening, Madam Chair Cherry, Vice Chair Kilgore, School Board Members, Dr. Smith, and the Hampton community. Tonight, we will present the proposed other funds budgets for fiscal year '20, and they include Fund 51, Food and Nutrition Services, Fund 60, our reimbursable projects, Fund 65, Rental Income, and our Athletics Fund, Fund 94. To co-present with me tonight, I have the pleasure to introduce Ms. Edwina Forrest, and she is going to start our presentation off by going through the proposed budget for our Fund 51 fund. Good evening, School Board Chair, Mrs. Cherry, Dr. Smith, and School Board Members. I will be presenting Food Services, Fund 51. For FY '20, Food and Nutrition Services is projecting a balanced budget with three months of operating in reserve. Our total revenue is estimated at $11.3 million, of which $8.3 million in federal funds and $345,000 in state funds. Our breakfast in the classroom program or our breakfast after the bell does impact both our state and federal funds, and we are continuously growing this program in our schools. This year, we've added Booker and Sims, putting Hampton City Schools at 16 schools that are implementing an alternative breakfast program, or you've heard of it as breakfast in the classroom. The plan is to add at least three schools next year, Asbury, Tyler, and Lindsay, for FY '20. Besides increasing our breakfast program, we are also, we've been working on our lunch participation by implementing Milk Day Promotions, National School Lunch Week Promotions, Fruit and Vegetable Promotions, which all help increase our student awareness and our participation in our program. Our other revenue is estimated for donated commodities at $780,000 and $2.4 million for catering services, interest à la carte, and school meals. The 2020 Proposed School Lunch Price Increase. USDA provides the school divisions with a tool to calculate our paid lunch prices. The 2019-20 Paid Lunch Calculator has not been released, but using the last year's equity calculator, Hampton City Schools will need to raise the lunch price five cents, and this is reflected on this slide here. And here is the comparison with Hampton to our local paid lunch prices. The impact of the five cent increase for lunch will place Hampton City Schools with the lowest of elementary and high school paid lunch price and ties us with Gloucester if there are no changes to occur in the upcoming school year. Hampton City Schools, we do have 14 CEP school sites, and this does include our downtown Hampton Child Development Center, sorry. For the next slide, you have before you our FY '20-20 School Breakfast Price. At this time, we are not requesting a price increase for the paid breakfast place, and our average cost of a breakfast is 98 cents. Next slide. For our FY '20 Food Service Expenditures, $4.3 million for personnel costs, $7.6 million for non-personnel costs, and our personnel costs are in line with Fund 50. Food and Nutrition Services has received two equipment grants this school year, and we plan to apply for additional equipment grants for this upcoming school year. Although food costs will increase, my team is continuously working with our managers in developing better inventory and ordering practices, which will help, which will continue to help us in our overall management of our food cost. That concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions from board members? Thank you.
Thank you. Now moving to Fund 60, our reimbursable projects. So reimbursable projects, these include any grants that we get from federal, state, and other revenue sources. We also account for any special projects that were reimbursed, but they're not, they're non-grant sources. So we're going to actually take a deeper dive into the projects that we expect for fiscal year '20, but I do want to point out that for our original budget for fiscal year '19, we had an approved budget of around $20.7 million. Now, looking at the revised budget for '19, the revised budget is about $24 million. That change of about $4 million is due to carryforward funds from '18 into '19. So when we looked at the actual projection for fiscal year '20, you'll see that it's $21.8 million. So this is less than the revised budget, but that is because we expect there to be less carryforwards as we continue on from year to year. Now, we do have to make some assumptions when we create the Fund 60 budget. One of those assumptions is, we always think that, you know, we're going to continue to get the same grant awards every year as long as we can continue to pursue them. There are grants that are considered one-time, so that, you know, we'll get them for one year, but we won't expect to receive those in fiscal year '20. And in many of those cases, you'll see a zero proposed budget for the next school year. We also look at what carryforward funds may still be here at the end of June 30 of 2019. That is a very high-level expectation because we're continuing to spend at the time that we're developing the budget, but we do put an assumption within the fiscal year '20 budget. And then there also are some state funds for certain projects that the General Assembly actually passes, so we'll actually set the budget at whatever the state reimbursement is based on the General Assembly's budget. So when you look at the fiscal year '20 proposed budget versus the revised '19, it'll show a decrease of around $2.2 million or 9.51 percent, but again, most of that is being driven by this less carryforward funds expected going into fiscal year '20. So looking at our state reimbursable projects. So in total, when you compare the projection for '20 to the revised, it's a decrease of about $850,000. But I want to point out that much of that decrease is driven by the second line on this slide, the Year-Round Planning Grant. That is a new grant that we received in fiscal year '19, and it was around $1.2 million. Those funds can be used in fiscal year '19 and fiscal year '20, so we have a projection within our '20 budget that we're going to still have a little over half of those funds available to spend next year, so that is contributing to much of the decrease. I also want to point out the Driver's Education Program. So you'll see, this is kind of midway through the slide, a projection of around $44,000. This is how much we expect to receive from the state. However, there are some student fees related to our Behind the Wheel program, and we'll see what the projections are for student fees later on in the presentation. You'll note that you see zero next to the $44,000 for fiscal year '19, but that is because in how the budget was presented, it was all captured in student fees, but all of the money was still budgeted. It's just going to show a little differently, and we'll see that in the next couple of slides. So looking at our federal funds. So our federal funds mostly run on a grant year of about 27 months. So much of the decrease that we're expecting between fiscal year '20 and fiscal year '19 is just, again, related to less carryforward funds going into the next school year. Our largest grant is Title I and our Title 6B for our Special Education Program, but we anticipate that, you know, we will continue to receive those grants going forward. Looking at our tuition or student fees, the projection for fiscal year '20 is around $155,000, with the largest project being our non-remedial summer school program at around $100,000. Just to point to the Driver's Education Program, you'll see $17,000 projection, and that is, again, just the student fee amount, and you'll see in fiscal year '19 that the entire $61,000 was budgeted here. Again, it's just a presentation difference. Then for our other funds, our largest other project is our CPEG television station. It actually represents about 79 percent of the $1.9 million. The revenue that's generated from Verizon and Cox, and then also the supplement that the Fund 50 Operating Fund and the City of Hampton provide goes into the budget projection for fiscal year '20. Now moving to our Rental Income Fund, Fund 65. The projection for fiscal year '20 is based on lease agreements that we currently have, and the projection is $163,000. You will notice that for fiscal year '20, we are not proposing to need to use fund balance as we did in fiscal year '19. However, in the event that the needs arise, that we have a larger capital project, then we will request use from the School Board of fund balance if needed. Different for fiscal year '20 compared to '19, we are recommending to split the utility costs for Mallory and Mary Peak between Fund 50 and Fund 65. It's $46,000 split between the two funds, and you'll see that $38,000 is for electricity and the remaining 7,500 is for water and sewage costs. And then the remaining budget of 117 is for repair costs. Now taking a look at our Athletics Fund. So for the fiscal year '20 budget, we are proposing revenue of $496,000. This is consistent with the current budget, with much of the revenue coming from the operating budget Fund 50, as we provide $277,000 to assist our athletic programs. The funds for football and the remaining sports are based on anticipated ticket sales, and then also there are activity fees that are charged to students, and they are budgeted based on anticipated participation, and they are about $25 per sport, and we are not projecting or proposing any increase to that fee. Looking at the expenditures for the Athletics Funds, the top two expenditures, when you take out the high school allocations, which we'll discuss in the next slide, are security and our officials. Now, officials, we actually use third-party vendors for our different sports. Well, for security services, we utilize the Hampton Police Department or the Hampton Sheriff's Office, and we also ensure that we budget funds for postseason travel. Looking at the high school allocations, it's a total of $228,000, which each high school receiving around $57,000. The budget is originally allocated just based on the number of students, the length of the season, and equipment needs. These funds can be transferred as the athletic directors and the schools need, but this is the original setup for fiscal year '20. That concludes the presentation for the fiscal year '20 Other Funds.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from board members about any of the funds that have been presented? Yes, Ms. Henry?
Back on the federal reimbursements, the special ed increase, is that due to some staffing needs or due to increase in salary for staff? Or both?
It's mainly increase in salary and also just a projection of what we think may be carryforward between fiscal year '19 and fiscal year '20.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Thank you very much. We all get it. Right, Ms. Mugler?
Yes, yes.
Okay, Dr. Smith, moving on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our next presentation will be on that of the proposed calendar for the years outlined in your board packet, and so at this particular time, Dr. Haynes will introduce this particular presentation and provide context for it, so thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman Cherry, Vice Chairman Kilgore, Members of the Board, Dr. Smith, and the Hampton community. We're pleased to present to you tonight the 2019-2020 Proposed Calendar and the 2020-2021 Draft or Planning Calendar. With us tonight, we have Melissa Paul Riedel, who is a kindergarten teacher at Burbank Elementary, home of the Bulldogs, and of course, Mrs. Kate Maxlow, who is our Director of Innovation and Professional Learning for Hampton City Schools. She also serves as the facilitator for our Internal Calendar Committee here and also the point of contact for Hampton City Schools with the Regional Planning Calendar Committee. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Paul Riedel or Mrs. Maxlow, and they will go through the presentation, and we'll entertain questions in the end if we have any.
All right. Good evening. Very excited to be here today. What we are doing is going over a two-year calendar to support continuous improvement of student achievement and professional learning for employees. So we're going to be reviewing the 2019 and 2020, and also the 2020-2021, and I know the question on a lot of people's minds has to do with the General Assembly and what is going on and the fact that they have voted to allow us to open before Labor Day. That is something that obviously the governor still has to sign off on, so that'll be happening on March 26 or before, so because we are here today, we are planning as if we are going forward with the way it has always been. When the governor signs, if the governor signs, then we will get together as a regional calendar committee and with external stakeholders and internal stakeholders, the superintendent and the school board, we will discuss options at that point. But for now, we're going to keep it the way that it's always been, just to answer that one. And then we also wanted to continue to support the Regional School Calendar Committee. So we have several people on our team and our committee, including parents, teachers, support personnel, community members, and administrators, all providing input on this calendar. And I would like to take a moment at this time to recognize our committee members. And now I'm going to turn it over to Missy, who is going to take you through the rest of it.
There were several important factors to consider when creating the calendar, and they included developing a calendar that includes Code of Virginia requirements, as well as school division considerations, exploring the regional impact that our calendar will have, and providing for school closing due to severe inclement weather, professional learning and growth, parent-teacher conferences, school learning plan, related activities, teacher workdays, and breaks. Here you can see the process that we followed to develop the camp calendar. We've been meeting since November. We incorporated the regional calendar decisions. We publicized our proposed calendars on the HCS website and emailed and solicited feedback. We received and reviewed the feedback, and we made adjustments where necessary. The highlights of the 2019-2020 calendar are as follows. It projects instructional and non-instructional days for the next two years. It builds in six two-hour early release days for elementary and middle school students. It builds in two early dismissal days for all students, with staff working normal hours so that we can have a half-day professional development. It incorporates time for parent conferences in November and with a half-day of professional learning, and it includes one day of unencumbered teacher work time at the end of the semester. There are several key points about this calendar, including that it has seven pre-service days for school learning plan, PD, and teacher workdays. It provides a half-day of division-wide professional development for elementary, middle, and high school in November. It provides one regional professional development day at the end of the first semester, and it provides one unencumbered teacher workday at the end of the first semester. There are several additional benefits to this calendar. Firstly, because we are aligned with the regional calendar in terms of the start date, Thanksgiving break, winter break, and spring break, and the January professional development day, it accommodates the needs of Hampton's families who are affected by neighboring divisions' calendars across the peninsula. It provides one bank day for inclement weather, and additional days will be made up at the discretion of the superintendent. There are three early close days for all students and Hampton City Schools employees, during which all schools and offices will close two hours early. These days are December 20, 2019, February 14, 2020, and May 22, 2020. This calendar also continues to maintain spring break as the first full week in April. And at this time, we would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions from board members about the proposed calendar? Yes, Ms. Mugler?
Just one quick question about the bank day. One bank day, is that consistent with what we have been doing?
It is actually what we've done for the last two years, and that's... It is actually what we've done for the last two years. And that's actually where we've received the most feedback, is about the one banked day. And so, as a calendar committee and with talking with all of our stakeholders, what we decided was that it made the most sense because we have to start after Labor Day and because we follow the regional calendar committee, the only way we could get more banked days would be to go later in June. Well, if we go later in June, then that puts a lot of our students at a disadvantage when it comes to AP tests, IB tests, and SOL tests, especially for those AP and IB where they're competing nationally with schools that are opening earlier in August. So, what we decided was that it would make more sense, and we would lose less instructional time if we lose more than one day, to then make it up at the superintendent's discretion as soon as possible in order to give our students the most instructional time before those potentially life-changing tests.
Okay. Yes, Dr. Mason?
Question for you. What school divisions are included in the regional?
Sure. Gloucester, Williamsburg, York County, Newport News.
Thank you.
Yes. So, it's everyone who goes to New Horizons, who we share New Horizons with.
Any other questions? Yes, Ms. Henry?
Looking at the calendar for the immediate next year, I noticed that it's one of those happily Labor Day is early.
Yes.
And so, to change all the calendar for the next year would just be horrendous.
Yes.
And fortunately, it's one of those early ones, so it really doesn't ruin your life so much. I would think that if you have any discussion, it's going to be about the next year, which is the opposite. It's one of the late Labor Days, which make you have late June, which nobody really likes. And that perhaps if it's signed off, that the regional group might reconsider the year after next, the planning calendar.
Yes. And that's what we talked about in some of our latter meetings. Honestly, we weren't, we didn't think that it was going to get through the General Assembly at that point, and then happily it did. So, that is something that we've talked about. A lot of the other regional calendar committees have already submitted their school calendars, and their school boards had voted on them, so we can't change that at this point. But yes, that is absolutely something that we're going to start talking about as soon as the governor signs it.
Well, it's good that the one that we can't change is that early Labor Day because everybody's much happier getting out the second week in June instead of the third week.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Great job, as always. I know, you know, the calendar committee doesn't always know that when they got placed on this committee, it was a lifetime appointment. And you're not allowed off unless you find two replacements to get on for you. We appreciate all your work. It's not always been an easy job. I think you've gotten, you've made it easy by agreeing and making so much good progress with it for the last 10 years or more. But it's, it used to not be, it was the job, Ms. Maxlow, that people said, please, no, I don't want to do the calendar, anything but the calendar committee.
Yeah, and you'll find it funny. I actually asked to be on the calendar committee, not realizing any of that because I cared about professional learning. Now I'm in charge of it. That happened.
Thank you very much.
Well, you've done a good job.
Fifteen years of the presentation.
I tell you, great job. Any other questions by board members? Again, great job, and thank you again.
Thank you.
Madam Chair and members of the board, the final report will be that of our business and operations, the financial report, and Ms. Torch will provide that.
Good evening again. Tonight, I will present the January 2019 monthly budget report. At the end of January, revenues totaled $102 million and were 4.2% lower when compared to the previous fiscal year. This difference is primarily due to the timing of our local governing payment, which is based on our monthly cash flow needs. But additionally, in January, our supplemental lottery funds were delayed by the state until March of 2019. And this is because the state wanted to monitor the General Assembly's actions. But they have sent us communication to confirm that they will start providing those funds this month. Then looking at our expenditures and encumbrances, they totaled $117 million. This is approximately 1.1% higher than last year, so it's still fairly consistent. Also included in the report are the transfers to and from the technology classification, which is also identified as category nine. Thank you.
Are there any questions from board members from Ms. Torch about the business report? Thank you, Ms. Torch.
Madam Chair and members of the board, that concludes superintendent and staff reports.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Moving on to the next item agenda, number four, hearing of any delegations or presentation of any written communication or petitions. I have received one. Ms. Bowers, would you please read the protocol, and we ask all speakers to please abide by it. Thank you.
Citizens are invited to address the school board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forums are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk. Each individual will have five minutes to speak. All comments shall be directed to the school board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school board with decorum on policy issues. Speakers shall not address matters involving individual students as these topics may violate confidentiality and are not appropriate in a public forum. Presentation of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards, or other similar documents not originated under the auspices of the school board or administration is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Our speaker, I'd like to call on Ms. Brenda Marks.
Board members, Dr. Smith, good evening. My name is Brenda Marks. I reside at 54 Marina Road. I have a nine-year-old daughter who attends Hunterby Andrews School. In regards to my last attempt to discuss with you issues unresolved at the school and administrative levels, I state the following. I believe my First and Fourteenth Amendment rights were violated by the board. To that extent, you were sent a letter today requesting a review of three board policies and/or agreements, one on tonight's agenda for deliberation for their revision of their construction and/or application. The board's selective inconsistency in enforcing the public comment policy on that particular night was to censor my comments and restrict me from stating publicly that Hampton City Schools does not mediate in good faith, and when mediated agreements are reached, the district makes no effort to honor them. As the violations of these rights are legally actionable, the same letter has been sent to the clerk to meet statutory requirements. Having said that, I would like to address the concerns closest to my heart are special ed kids, well-written IEPs and 504s, and their compliance are key to our children succeeding. It is my opinion this board does not care about the education our kids get. I say that based upon the response I received in my Freedom of Information Act request for the number of complaints filed against the district at a state and federal level as to compliance with IDEA and the equivalent state statutes. That response stated simply that you did not collect that statistical data. It would seem that if the board's concern was providing the best education for every child every day, they would monitor complaints that had risen to these levels in order to develop goals and strategies to prevent them. I believe the fact you do not request the numbers, if this response is correct, is because you are aware there are many and choose not to deal with the problem. The district has hired a new sped director whom I believe, if not drowned by the mess she walked into and lack of support, would do a great job for our kids. She cannot do it if sped positions are abolished and monies for those positions are removed from her budget to go to the academies. I'm quite sure Ms. Judge could find many uses for that $400,000 you remove from her budget this fiscal year. Our children do not get whatever it takes from this board. They get whatever their parents fight for, dragging you, kicking, and screaming to whatever agency that finally convinces you to follow the law. And once that agreement is made, this board makes no effort to ensure that the division honors its word. Geniuses and parents do not have to invest one-tenth of the effort we do in getting their children educated. When you have to call or email schools daily to get answers to the simplest of questions, when you spend hours reviewing IEPs and 504s, walking away believing things are right, only to find them not being followed, you have no choice but to constantly supervise your child's education every single day. We, as parents, should not have to hire attorneys and facilitators to get the needs of our children met. That is not how the law says it is supposed to be. I would challenge you to put as much of your focus on our kids, the most needy of your population, as you do the academies, your primary focus. Finally, I would like to make this observation. Bullying is alive and thriving in Hampton City Schools. Teachers are so overwhelmed and administrators so focused on passing that test and staying accredited, they cannot keep their finger on the pulse of the population of the schools. The atmosphere in the schools is such that there are children who would rather die than face another day in attendance. If you doubt me, I dare each and every one of you to seek the data from each school on the number of instances in this year alone of children who have either spoken or acted on self-harming behaviors. The numbers will surprise you. I can personally assure you, I'm not just talking about middle and high school students. This problem exists at even the elementary level. Your motto, every child, every day, whatever it takes, is a lie until every children is given the tools necessary to gain an education and thrive in your schools. Until that time, your actions match your words, you are continuing the perpetration of that lie. Thank you.
Ms. Bowers, I received no other requests to address the board. Have you?
No.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to our next item of business will be deliberation, item number five. It consists of 5.01 Resolution for VSB A Business Honor Role Ferguson Enterprises, 5.02 2019-2020 School Calendar, and 2020-2021 Planning Calendar, 5.03 Revision of School Board Policy KL Public Complaints, 5.04 Review of School Board Policy AE School Division Goals and Objectives, 5.05 Review of School Board Policy AF Comprehensive Plan, 5.06 Review of School Board Policy AGA Recognition for Accomplishment, 5.07 Revision of School Board Policy BDA Board Meetings, 5.08 Revision of School Board Policy BDD Electronic Participation in Meetings from Remote Locations, 5.09 Revision of School Board Policy BDDB Agenda, 5.10 Review of School Board Policy CB School Superintendent, 5.11 Review of School Board Policy CFA Attendance Officers, 5.12 Review of School Board Policy CH Superintendent's Authority to Adopt Regulations, and 5.13 Revision of School Board Policy KKA, excuse me, Service Animals, excuse me, in Public Schools. Are there any questions from board members? Let's take 5.01 Resolution for VSB A Business Honor Role Ferguson Enterprises. Ms. Gore, I believe you have some information to share.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Over the past six years, Ferguson Enterprises has generously awarded our division with the Ferguson Cares Grant. As a result of Ferguson Enterprises' willingness to invest in the education of our young people, over 9,000 fourth-grade students, along with their teachers, were given the opportunity to visit Colonial Williamsburg. This year, Ferguson expanded its generosity to benefit our sixth-grade U.S. History students and their teachers. They were provided with the opportunity to visit the Mariners Museum and receive program outreach at no cost. Just as with Colonial Williamsburg field trips, all transportation and admission costs were covered. According to Ms. Almadiz, our curriculum leader for social studies, these opportunities will greatly benefit our students by allowing them to see history they read about come alive before their very eyes and make learning history fun. So, as you can see, Ferguson Enterprises has lived up to their company motto of Ferguson Cares, and they are truly an organization with a heart for education. And as of this year, over those six years, we have confirmed they have donated over $102,000 to our students here in Hampton City Schools.
Thank you. That's excellent. Are there any questions by board members regarding the resolution? Thank you, Ms. Gore. The next one, the planning, actually the school calendar and the planning calendar. Any questions from board members on that? Third, of course, is the revision of School Board Policy KL Public Comments, and that belongs to Ms. Ruth. And she's coming forward. Are there any questions from board members regarding School Board Policy KL Public Complaints? Okay, thank you, Ms. Ruth. The next one's 5.04 to 5.13 all belong to Ms. Reeves. Are there any questions from board members regarding any of these policies for Ms. Reeves? Ms. Reeves, I do believe you have a comment for one of them.
Yes, Madam Chair. With regard to 5.04 Policy AE School Division Goals and Objectives, there was a concern, a comment from one of the board members when compared with the next policy, which is AF and the comprehensive plan. If you get down to Section B of Policy AE, it talks about the superintendent shall submit to the school board for its approval a strategic plan that can be updated annually. And then at the end of the paragraph, it talks about development of this strategic plan. And in discussion, the comprehensive plan and strategic plan terms have been used often interchangeably. And so, the recommendation is because this is a different plan based on standards of quality that is annual, not biennial, that we're going to take strategic out in both places of that paragraph, and we're just going to call it, a plan shall be adopted annually that incorporates those standard of quality goals and objectives. Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am, it does.
It'll take that confusion out.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from board members regarding what Ms. Reeves just indicated? Thank you, Ms. Reeves, for that clarification regarding that policy. Are there any questions from board members regarding any of the policies that fall under Ms. Reeves, which is basically the rest of them?
They're all board policies. That's why I did them for you.
Yes, we understand. You take care of us.
Just a quick question.
Yes, Ms. Mugler.
The policy change you referenced on AE has not made a play on to the screen.
Oh, no, no. It was just a discussion as recently as this afternoon.
Very good.
We did not, we were not able to get it to you, and I didn't want to confuse you. So, I was just going to explain why I'm taking both, those two words out in that one paragraph.
So, that's what we can expect to see when this is moved to action?
Correct, unless there's some objection.
Okay. Hearing no more questions. Thank you, Ms. Reeves. Appreciate it. Did you have something, Ms. Henry?
Makes an awkward sentence. You might, as you take those two words out, consider combining the first two sentences in a little better, smoother, whatever. But just think about it as you edit, maybe. Okay. I'm not going to rewrite it for you on the spot, but you know, I think it could do something different.
Wordsmith it, so, okay.
I will read it through for clarity, Mrs. Henry, and appropriately offer something that sounds a little bit
Smoother.
Smoother.
Thanks again, Ms. Reeves. Moving on to item six, items for action. They consist of 6.01 Revision of School Board Policy EEAC School Bus Maintenance and Safety, 6.02 Revision of School Board Policy EE- 6.02 Revision of School Board Policy EEAD, Use of School Buses; 6.03 Revision of School Board Policy KN, Sex Offender Registry Notification; 6.04 Revision of School Board Policy KNA, Violent Sex Offenders on School Property; 6.05 Review of School Board Policy JEDB, Student Dismissal Precautions; and 6.06 Review of School Board Policy JI, Student Scholarship. Do I hear a motion?
Madam Chairman, I move that we consider 6.01 through 6.06 as a block.
Second.
It has been moved by Ms. Henry and seconded by Ms. Mugler that we...
Actually, I should say we move that we approve them as a block, if we could just consider...
I knew what you meant.
It's not going to get anywhere.
Moved by Ms. Henry and seconded by Ms. Mugler that we approve items 6.01 through 6.06 as a block. Is there any discussion from board members? Hearing none, Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye, motion carries. Now, as we move to item seven, that is information. Therefore, item 7.01, next meeting, our next meeting will take place, actually, um, next Wednesday. Is that the 13th? 13th already, March 13th, 2019. And it'll be here at Jones Magnet Middle School, and it will include a public hearing on proposed budget regarding, um, Funds 51, 60, 65, and 94. Is there any information to come from you, Dr. Smith?
Uh, Madam Chair, I would like to, uh, share with the board, as well as with, um, our viewing, um, audience, that Phoebus High School, uh, will be playing, the Boys Varsity Basketball Team, uh, will be playing tomorrow at, uh, the Siegel Center, uh, in Richmond, Virginia. That's at Virginia Commonwealth University, um, for the state championship. So they'll be in the state championship game there. And, uh, Dr. Woods, I saw Dr. Woods somewhere. Uh, if you want to just make a general comment about, about that, Dr. Woods. Uh, I know that they're region, they, they won the regional championship, and, uh, she's always eager to share, uh, the great things that are going on at the high school level. And so this is a wonderful time, um, for us to offer, um, our support, certainly, to these young, uh, people as well.
Good evening, yes, we're excited. The Phantoms will be at Siegel Center tomorrow for the state championship. Last night, they were successful in the game against John Marshall. So tomorrow, the entire city of Hampton will be Phoebus Phantoms tomorrow.
That's right.
Wish us well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Woods, and let me just say something too. Um, we want to thank you and Dr. Smith for your leadership, especially with our high schools, and, um, I was at the game last night, and I can tell you, it was just, um, and, and so was Dr. Haynes and Dr. Owens and others, but I watched because that game was held at Heritage, and that game was packed. In fact, that game was so packed, they did not even start it until 30 minutes later because the lines were so long, getting, getting in. But I will tell you how, how good it made me feel, and I've told several board members this today, to see everyone of the Phoebus administrators, from the principal down, standing. They stood so they could be seen by their students. They stood so they could see what was going on, and as that game got close and was headed to overtime, the principal, Dr. Stapleton, actually walked between the benches and the stands to make sure she was moving people back in the stands. They were doing it in an orderly manner, and I just said, that was wonderful. The second thing I noticed was, and I was telling Mr. Kilgore this today, to see fans from Hampton, Kickatan, and Bethel in the stands pulling for Phoebus, it really made your heart feel good.
Absolutely, one city.
That's right, and one city, one school division.
That's right, that's right.
And while, uh, Dr. Woods certainly won't, she's standing at the podium there, you want to just say a word about, um, the ceremony today?
Yes, we had, uh, the commitment to graduate for the class of 2022 today. Many of you were there, and we appreciate that support. Uh, the young people had a great time, learned a lot from Dr. Adolf Brown. He was our guest speaker, Xavier was there as well. Um, and I think it's a really good opportunity, again, for all four high schools to come together for the common purpose of recommitting themselves to the portrait of a Hampton graduate, as well as to say, along with their family and the community, we are all here for you. Class of 2022, June of 22, 22, you'll be on that stage graduating with all the accomplishments of a portrait of a Hampton graduate. So it was a great day, and tomorrow will be a great day as well. Because we're going to Richmond.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, Dr. Smith?
That concludes my, uh, comments, Madam Chair.
Okay, before I move to information items from other board members, I'd just like to say, I don't think publicly we've announced that you are the Region Two Superintendent of the Year. So we want to give you an applause. I know you've been all over the newspapers and on everybody's lips. Um, but we are very, very proud of that. Any other information items from board members? Yes, Xavier?
I just wanted to, uh, thank everyone, uh, especially Dr. Mason. Um, Dr. Mason announced that, uh, was Harry F. Bird Leadership Award recipient for the third congressional district. Uh, and he actually came up to Richmond and, and, uh, watched the ceremony with me, and so it was really nice, and I just want to thank you all because it's a leadership-based award, so you have to show how you've made a difference in the community and different things that you've done. And so, uh, being on this board has been one of the things that I've talked about heavily in the application process, and, um, it was the reason why I got the award. So thank you so much for the opportunity, as always, and thank you for your support.
Yes, and Mr. Williams, you make us proud.
Absolutely.
Yes, Ms. Mugler?
I, I don't think it was mentioned at our last public meeting, and you did mention the Region Two Superintendency, uh, honor, but, uh, Dr. Smith was also honored by the, uh, Virginia Center for Inclusive Communities with the humanitarian award and, um, for his work here in Hampton with our young people. And, uh, we, we continue, as a school board, be really proud that you're our superintendent, so...
Absolutely.
Just want the public to know that about him.
Good, you can say that again, I'm proud to be here, so make sure that you heard it.
I am proud to be here.
Thank you. Any other information items? Hearing none, to come before the board, we stand adjourned.